Hey Jeff.
Howdy.
How's your Monday going?
Ah, it's been quite productive.
Well, good.
I don't know how I pulled it together, but I did.
We can fix that if you want to come upstairs real quick.
Uh, maybe just a short streak, we'll see.
We, uh, we won't let it get out that you've been productive today. We don't want to ruin your reputation. Alright, so Sharon is joining us. Jillian was meeting with someone out in the hallway, so she'll be along shortly. We have now Dustin tonight, he's still coming back from his honeymoon, so. Uh, oh, that means I'm presenting some items tonight. Got this.
I'm off headset for a bit.
Josh, can you hear me now?
Hi Sharon, yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Alright, I'm on the phone though. I'm gonna see if the earphones work.
Okay.
Do I have to keep the phone off to do that?
You might want to mute your phone.
Star six, right?
Uh. Uh, round button in the upper right-hand corner.
I see it, yeah. Josh, can you hear me?
Hi Jillian, yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Are you on the headset or are you on the phone?
No, we're gonna get the headset to work.
Shit, I'm just gonna return them. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Check in. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Sure can, Sean.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll turn it back on while you're saying. Marion, you need to fix your camera. That's better. How are you? Who's that young man? The microphone is muted.
Good evening Sean, James Fenton here.
Hi James, how you doing?
Doing well, doing well. Yourself?
Yeah, can we talk for a second?
Please, shall I give you a call?
Call my phone right quick.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and accidentally, I'm gonna pause the recording. I didn't realize that we were being recorded, but nothing, this isn't gonna make it into the public record. But James, if you want to make sure your microphone's muted when you talk to Sean, thank you. Sean, you're saying a lot and you're still muted.
That would be the unmute button. Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call this, uh, meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission for Monday, June 22nd, 2020 to order. And before we begin, well, no, actually, let me read a statement first. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 16 and 34 regarding public meetings and social distancing, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, members of the Planning Commission may participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. Um, I need to hold a vote. If the members of the commission are in favor of holding this meeting remotely. Will you take a roll call vote, Josh?
I'll do it.
Oh, Marion, thank you.
Chair Perrier.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Harris. Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler. That was a vote of three people. Is that, do I have the right attendance?
You do. The problem is, I need to take a roll call, but I was supposed to hold that meeting before we did, opened the meeting and held a roll. But let's just do it. Um, can we get a confirmation of who is present? So.
You want to do a roll call? Do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am, please. Uh, we need to get a roll call of who's, who's here. I'm not sure that some of those people are in attendance that you just called.
Okay, I'll start with the roll call vote. Chair Perrier.
Here.
Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler. I don't think you have a quorum if there's only three people here.
Uh, I don't believe we do. I've never run into that before.
I haven't either.
I see Albert on there, but his thing's not unmuted.
Albert is not in the, uh, chamber.
Has anyone talked to, uh, Mr. Harris?
Uh, we can wait just a little bit, see if anybody else shows up here, maybe trying to log on.
Okay, let's. Let's, uh, let's give it about four or five minutes and we'll see who, who joins. I can try to text, uh, Mr. Harris.
Uh, does not have a Zoom link to join the meeting. That is Alana Hibbler. Somebody needs to call Alana.
Councilman Fennell, I'm on it. This is Josh.
Okay, she just texted me. Let me try to get ahold of Mr. Harris.
I just spoke with Rick and he is, uh, pulling, about ready to pull into his driveway and we'll be able to log on shortly.
Who was that you spoke with?
Uh, Rick Organe.
Okay. Bill, I believe all we need is one more to have a quorum, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, we need four.
And is Josh, uh, trying to contact, uh, Alana?
Both Alana and Matt Harris.
Okay, cause I, yeah, I also received a text from Alana. She's trying to join but doesn't have that link.
Can anybody get ahold of Matt Harris?
Uh, I've texted him but have not had a response.
I, yeah, I can, I'm unsuccessful so far.
Does anybody recall Matt saying he might be out of town? Or not be able to attend at the last meeting?
Bill, uh, a couple of weeks ago when he was at my house, he mentioned something, that I, his plans was unsure at that time.
Okay, seems like it's hard time keeping track of who says what, uh, uh, at these, some of these other meetings, but, uh, it seems like somebody said that they might not be able to be here.
So Bill, I received a text from Alana. She said, "I'm on the Facebook Zoom," so she can see and hear, but I don't believe that, um, enables her to, uh, to speak, does it?
It does not. The, uh, Facebook feed is for informational purposes only. The only way she'll be able to participate is if she joins the meetings, like, the meeting like she just did. It looks like she's connecting to audio. Alana, do we have you?
You do. I'm here, thank you.
And Matt Harris is attempting to join, uh, the meeting right now, so we'll have him online shortly. So we have four. Let me give Dr. Organe and, and Matt Harris just another minute or two to join, so we'll have everybody. I'm gonna, um, I think we'll go ahead and get started as we do have a quorum, and hopefully Dr. Organe and Mr. Harris will be able to join us. They may be having some difficulty logging in. Uh, is that alright with you, Josh, or are you tied up assisting them?
I'm happy to move forward if you are Mr. Perrier.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll call this, uh, meeting to order and, uh, start out with a short invocation. Um, is, did we say Albert is present? If not, I'll be happy to go ahead. Um, dear Lord, we ask that you, um, watch over this meeting and help us to make wise decisions for our community, and please be with those who are suffering from threats around the country of, of the virus and, and other fears. Please, uh, watch over these proceedings and keep us safe. And as the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit would pray, amen. Um, if you'll join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance.
to the flag United States
The states of America.
And to the republic which it stands
Stands.
one nation
Nation.
God indivisible
Invisible.
and just
Even just as far all.
Uh, we have already called the roll, um, but let the minutes, or let the minutes show that, uh, Alana Hibbler has joined us. I don't see any more having joined us on the screen.
Uh, John, it's Matt. Can you guys hear me?
I, I can see Matt Harris. Matt Harris has joined us. Um, Mr. Secretary, do you have any minutes to present? Mr. Wilson, um, if you're still there, uh.
Yes, I'm still here.
Yes, do you have the past minutes to present for approval?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got minutes, uh, March the 9th, uh, April the 6th, April the 27th, my move will approve.
I have a motion by the Secretary, Mr. Wilson, to approve the minister. I hear a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussions or changes, uh, minutes, corrections? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. So we'll take a roll call vote for approval of the minutes. Uh, Marion, will you please take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Harris. Vice Chair Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
It passes.
Chairman Perrier. This is Bill McCord, City Planner. I was wanting you, uh, read the COVID-19 disclaimer, if you will call it that, again, and vote on that.
Do you need, uh, yeah, I'll read it again. Do we need to, are you asking me to have another vote to hold the meeting electronically?
You didn't have a quorum the first time.
Yeah.
Oh, exactly right. Thank you, thank you. Um, pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, it's Number 16 and 34, uh, regarding public meetings and social distancing and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, members of the Planning Commission may participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. So at this time, I'll ask to, uh, members to vote, uh, on holding this meeting electronically. All in favor of holding this meeting, uh, by electronic means, uh, please respond to the roll call vote by, by saying aye. Marion, will you please take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris. Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Uh, motion approved, so we can proceed with the meeting. Uh, we've already had the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the roll call. Uh, at this time, I will open a public comment on any of the consent agenda items. Uh, well, first of all, I will ask, is there anybody in the public who would like to see items number 1 through 6, those are the consent agenda items, to see those removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, and then I'll hold a public comment. Do we have any hands raised? Josh? Do we have any hands raised? Josh?
So I am looking at the list of attendees. We have everyone signed in from a computer except for one phone caller with the last three of two, five, three. Phone caller two, five, three, I'm gonna unmute your line if you have something to speak on with this item or the future ones, if you let me know. Caller two.
This is this is Joshua Gibbs, um, here for, uh, Meredith and Foxville.
Got it.
I'm on the right.
Thank you, Joshua. Mr. Chairman, that, I see no raised hands for anyone who'd like to speak on agenda items.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone on the commission who would like to pull any of the consent agenda items, one through six, off of the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda? Seeing none, then, um, I'll entertain a motion for approval of items number one through six on the consent agenda as one item.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion presented by Mr. Uh, Councilman Fennell, and I think the second was by Matt Harris?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll, uh, call for a vote. So Marian, if you'll please take a roll call vote, uh, on the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair Purrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Okay, motion approved. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is Resolution Number two zero two zero dash oh nine one, um, Axum Properties LLC Building Edition. It's an amended site plan. And who is handling that item?
Okay, this is Sharon. I'm handling it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Sharon.
Okay. All right, this, uh, this item is for, um, it's on Gateway Drive. It's the Axum property. They are wanting to put in a hundred thousand, a ninety-eight thousand square foot building addition. Mostly for the warehousing and manufacturing of what they're already doing. They have met the parking requirements. They have put in landscaping. The only question has been on the detentioning and water quality. Uh, I believe they're doing the water quality onsite, but there's been some discussion about, uh, economic development is planning on them going to a regional detentioning, which they have gotten the grant for. Uh, probably Nick could fill you in more on that too, or James Fenton.
Mr. Chairman, this is James Fenton. Um, we have applied for and received a grant from the state to put in a detention facility just to the south of their building between that and the substation that exists. And the plans have been drawn up. Engineering's been done. It'll be going out to bid, and we are intending to, uh, start construction end of July, early August. It is fully funded and will occur.
Do we have a representative, um, well, let me get engineering's comments after we hear from the applicant. Uh, do we have a representative for the applicant present?
I have no idea.
Sharon, who was the engineer on this project? Was it Andy?
It should have been Andy, yes.
Andy, your line's been unmuted.
Yeah, this is Zach Baker here for Greenlit Design. Josh, can you hear me?
Yes, uh, Mr. Purrier, did you want to hear from Nick Tuttle first?
Uh, no, I, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant, and then I'd like to hear from engineering.
This is Zach Baker with Greenlit Design. Um, we agree to everything, so I'd just be here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, that would be, um, then, well, we did want to hear from engineering. Is Nick available? Or do we have anyone from engineering department?
Can you hear me now, Mr. Purrier?
Yes.
Yeah. Hello, Nick.
Okay, great. Sorry, I had to call in. I was having trouble with my internet connection. Uh, but this is Nick Tuttle with Engineering. And, um, it just is, is Sharon and James had mentioned, we, um, I have been working through the calculations for water quality on-site, which the, um, the applicant will be responsible for. Um, so Axum, the business, will be taking care of their water quality, and, and we have a condition uh, that, um, we still are working through, uh, to get the calculations to a point of approval. And, um, and the other side of this was what James had brought up, um, and it sounds like, um, from what we understand from the Economic Development Authority, our agency there, that, uh, the, the detention side of this will be taken care of, um, on a city-owned property that's to the south of this, and that it is a, a funded project. Um, and if things go on the schedule that, um, we anticipate, it would actually be um, under construction prior to the Axum site and, and should be, um, in line and, and, um, operational, you know, as it should be, um, in normal construction process. We don't have any other comments on the, the site or, um, site plan.
Do we have any questions from, uh, members of the commission for the applicant or for staff or engineering? Seeing none, the only question I'll ask is, um, so, just asking engineer, you're satisfied that the, uh, the timing of the two different properties, the city-owned, um, water quantity will be in place before the construction on the building is complete?
The, the schedules look as if, uh, the city project will be ahead of the Axum, uh, private development project, so at this point in time, it appears that we have good timing, so we'll, we'll hold out hope. Um, I don't know if there's, um, we could potentially, um, look at, at holding building permits or COs if we see any issues. Um, but, but at, at this point, we feel good about it.
And that was the only reason I asked. It's, um, I don't see any concern, but do, do we need, at the planning, we need to put any requirement on there, at this approval or not? Regarding building permit, COs, uh, and the completion of the, the, the city property project.
Your, your best protection would be the building permit, um, and James would have to speak a little bit more on the schedule. They, the Economic Development Agency has been the lead on the project, so they have a better grasp of what the schedule is.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is James Fenton with the Economic Development Agency. Uh, Ms. Bates, Rosemary Bates is on this call also, and, and she has the schedule in front of her, and if you would allow her to go ahead and work through this, again, uh, it is fully funded and will be under construction. Um, it should not be a, a concern, but I understand that you might have, and Ms. Bates, if you're available. Mr. King, could you unmute Ms. Bates?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm here. I'm just going to call up the, um, schedule to make sure I'm telling you all the right, the correct thing. I did not have it called up in front of me. I apologize.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think it'd be necessary, uh, Rosemary. I, I was just asking the engineering if they wanted us to place any kind of condition on it, uh, uh, to link the two projects together. That's all. But it sounds like the engineering's fine with it and staff's fine with it, so we don't need to spend any time on it. Let, another member of the commission has a comment or a question. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Johnny Wilson, I move, we approve.
Have we have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve? Do I hear a second? I will second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Marian, if you'll please take a roll call vote, uh, for the motion to approve item number seven. Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Dr. Organe.
Thank you, yes, but somehow my mute button's gone.
Okay. Ms. Hibbler.
Uh, for clarification, I lost audi- audio for like a minute. Uh, but I just logged on to my other thing, so we're voting on approval of this?
Axum, yes. Item seven.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
All right, it passes six zero.
All right, thank you. Item, item approved. Uh, we'll move on to item number eight, which is Resolution Number zero two zero dash oh nine three, Bledsoe Springs Annexation and Plan of Service. Okay. And this will come with a public comment, if there's anyone listening. Who, what, what staff member's handling this item?
Uh, Jillian Ogden, staff planner.
Go ahead, Jillian.
Um, so I'll encompass number eight and number nine in this. Number eight is the annexation and plan of service. Number nine is the rezoning with the preliminary master development plan for Bledsoe Springs. The owner and applicant request, uh, the approval of the annexation and plan of service for forty-four point seven nine acres located north of Hartsfield Pike and east of Airport Road. Staff also requests that the abandoned CSX Railroad right-of-way contiguous to this property and the existing city limits be included in the annexation. So this is the property that we were talking about, and the northwest property line along the industrial center is where that CSX Railroad is. The owner and applicant request to rezone the same property from R fifteen Medium Density Residential to R six PRD High Density Planned Residential Development District with a preliminary master development plan for Bledsoe Springs, containing a hundred and two single-family detached residential lots and a hundred and two attached townhome lots. PRDs allow the developer to propose the lot layout in architecture for Planning Commission and City Council consideration, but does have all the other requirements like open space percentages. R six PRD requires thirty-five percent open space, which this PMDP provides through buffer yards, water quality areas, and open space tracks. The density proposed for this development is four point six units per acre. The character area for this part of town recommends two to, two to six units per acre, so this PMDP is within that range. The property will be accessed by Hartsfield Pike from two new roadways and will connect to a stubout point in the Sunny Mead subdivision to the east. The single-family residences will be constructed with a minimum of seventy percent masonry or cementious materials such as hardy board. Uh, conceptual elevations are on your screen and were included in the pattern book. Um, these are similar to homes constructed in the Cairo State subdivision. The townhomes will have the same material makeup as the single-family homes. Um, and the applicant will ensure that the driveways are long enough to provide parking, uh, to not have overhang over the sidewalk. Planning, the planning department recommends approval of the resolution. Uh, both the annexation and the rezoning, uh, need to have a public comment, um, and they will go on to City Council following Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Do we have a, a representative for the applicant present?
Yeah, this is a, this is Greenlit.
Andy, or Zach, you've been unmuted.
This is Zach Greenlit Design. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Let me, uh, at this time, let me open to, to a public comment, and let me make clear, um, that we're going to hold a public comment on both items eight and nine, but we will be voting on them as separate items. Eight is the annexation and plan of service for this, and nine is the preliminary master development plan. So do we have anyone in the public online who would like to speak in regards to item eight or nine, which is Bledsoe Springs Annexation and Plan of Service and rezoning? Josh, I don't want to cut anyone off. Uh, do we have anyone raising their hand to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Michelle and Pascal Jevonce. Michelle or Pascal, your line's been unmuted.
Hi, Josh, it's Michelle. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Michelle.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, um, I just was, I do have one question about this. Um, it was playing, um, with the plan of service that, um, additional police and fire services would be required. And I know that that was kind of the same comment that was with the Woolhawk, and it seems like there's more development happening on this side of town, and so the fire station is my question, because, um, I want to know at what point we're gonna have to build another fire station, um, as that's expensive, and, um, I'm just concerned about, uh, if that'll cause tax increases for us here in the city. Um, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, we've received no other comments via email at this point.
Okay. Then with that, we will close the public comment on eight and, uh, nine, and we'll discuss, the commission will discuss the items together as one unit and vote on them separately. Any, uh, questions from member of the commission or any comments?
Hey, Mr. Purrier, it's, it's Matt Harris. Um, I, I think, I think I heard it when you guys were going through it, but just to clarify on the, the front entry garages, the developer is gonna put enough room where the cars don't overhang the sidewalk. Do I understand that correctly?
That has, that is a note that we gave the, the developer. Um, I believe they said they were gonna be at least twenty feet, which is how long a parking spot is. Um, obviously, this is still, yeah, this is still conceptual, but they have, that has maybe been clear to them.
Okay, no, that, that answers my concern. I just wanted to make sure we were bringing that up early in the process. Thank you.
So I'll throw a comment in there. Um, this property is currently in the county, and, and they're asking for annexation. In the county, they have an R fif, this property is owned R fifteen, which I assume, I shouldn't assume, I'll ask staff, is that roughly a fifteen thousand square foot lot? Or is it somewhere around a thirteen thousand square foot lot?
So if you were to split it up into single-family lots, for example, each lot would have to be fifteen thousand square feet, but as for a density requirement, it's closer to about eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Um, if you took the zoning now, you could theoretically, the, the density that would be allowed would be about a hundred and seventy-two units, I believe, um, and we are going to, they're requesting two hundred and four with this rezoning and development.
Well, I want to propose, I mean, our Economic Development Agency did express some concerns, uh, in, in the work-study session about the, uh, possibility of noise complaints from people who end up, you know, having a house back in that triangle. If y'all look at the screen, um, you see the triangle where the townhomes are going. It's really just the triangle where the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight townhomes are going.
No, it's eight times five. It's forty.
Well, no, there's eight townhomes that are in the triangle north of the creek. Well, no, there's eight townhomes that are in the triangle north of the creek that are in close proximity to Gateway Drive. Under the current zoning through the county, they could put in a hundred and sixty units. I would propose that the applicant submit and consider submitting an alternate plan where they keep the development out of that triangle north of the creek, but we allow density to the west of the creek. I don't know about getting up to two hundred and fourteen units. That's four point six densities, pretty high, especially compared to the density of the existing neighborhood to the right of them, to the east of them. But I do believe that we could get over a hundred and sixty units south of the creek. And alleviate and take care of ADA's concerns and the industrial park and the advantage to the developer would be that they would not have to spend the road infrastructure north of the creek. So any discussion on that from members of the commission?
I agree with the density part, especially that even though it's a buffer over there still, you know, it seems like a higher, the, the higher density compared to the, the current surrounding area is a little off. So I would suggest a lower density, not so much, sorry, the high that's proposed.
Yeah, Chair Perrier, I, I would tend to agree. I think the, the possibility of noise complaints with that being so close to the industrial park could be a valid concern. So I, I, I think it's a good idea for them to take a look at that.
Any other members of the commission? Would a representative from Greenlid like to, to respond to those questions or concerns?
This is Zach with Greenlid. Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry about that. Hey, I will say that the townhomes in that back triangle that you're talking about will be at least thirty feet off of that property line.
Zach, we understand that. And as far as setbacks, you're following the guidelines as far as setbacks. What we're saying is that you're also asking for an increase in density from what you would get under the county zoning. We're not willing, I can't say we, as, I can't speak for everyone, but I've heard two or three people echo what I said a moment ago. And that is that we're probably not willing to grant the, the increase in density that you're requesting along with the configuration of the townhomes that you've placed close to the industrial park. However, if you came back with an alternative plan where you got up to a density of maybe one eighty units and place everything to the west, to the south of the creek, you'll get an increase in density, which is not necessarily what you're asking for, but you will get an increase in density and you'll, you'll avoid the infrastructure cost of developing that road and going across that creek up there. So I think what I'm hearing from other members is that we're probably not inclined to vote in favor of this approval. And if you want to submit an alternate plan, you might want to request a deferral and have time to create that. However, you could go for a vote if you'd like to, because I don't know how everyone will vote on this. What is your, your response? Zach? Do we still have Zach on the line from Greenlid?
He's still showing up as an active member, an active panelist of this meeting. I believe he may be looking for direction or answers at the moment.
Okay, we'll give him a moment to, to consider that. Any, any discussion from the members of the commission or does staff have any comments on what we've just discussed?
Mr. Perrier, this is Bill McCord, City Planner.
Yeah.
I want to clarify, and I'm not sure if y'all picked up on it, the, the railroad right-of-way that's adjacent to this property has apparently been abandoned by CSX. However, title to that is unclear at this point. We believe that title, once it was abandoned, would revert to the adjacent property owners equally. In this case, the adjacent property owners in the, in the industrial park include two private entities and the city of Gallatin. So the city of Gallatin owns that property as you see there on the screen that says, where it says townhomes with the creek running through it and the cul-de-sac. Is, do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the city owns that, that lot there that's at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is adjacent to the railroad right-of-way. And if we understand correctly, and the right-of-way is abandoned, then the city owns the western half of the railroad right-of-way that was abandoned. And the applicant owns the eastern part, the eastern half of the railroad that is abandoned. And likewise, the other property owners on the west side of the railroad right-of-way owned their portion of the former railroad right-of-way. So technically, we would need those owners to join in with an annexation petition. However, we don't have to have them, but we would prefer to have them join in with an annexation petition to annex their portion of the right-of, the former right-of-way. So what the city can do, because the city owns a lot, could then join in and to annex the, what now would become the back portion of their lot or an attachment to that lot. And that would make the property contiguous. I don't really want to proceed through the annexation process if we can avoid it and have to go through the interlocal agreement process with the county. And we think that we can do this provided we can get clear title and evidence of a title of that former right-of-way to the adjacent property owners. So that's kind of part of the request is not only are they asking for annexation, but they would also be asking for the annexation of that portion of the right-of-way, which would be conveyed, would have been conveyed to them. And then the city will then join in as well before it goes through to the council.
So.
Excuse me a minute, Mr. Strather has joined the, the meeting.
Oh, thank you. Let the minute show that Albert Strather has joined the meeting. He's not on screen. Can Albert, Albert, can you hear us and can you speak? We'll give Mr. Albert, Mr. Strather time. So Bill, if you're, if I understand your, your point is that until that right-of-way issue is clarified, this would be a non-contiguous annexation and would, would require, and is it called an interlocal agreement with the county?
Yeah, we, we want to avoid that if possible. And I think that this is a good case to try to avoid it because it, assuming the, all the right-of-way abandonment process works out and is, and we get either the title opinion that indicates that the city owns part of it and the applicant owns part of it, then we are contiguous and we, we can go that route.
So would it be premature to vote on the annexation of this before the right-of-way along the railroad bed is resolved?
I, I don't know if it's premature, but you might want to make a, a condition that, that, that be accomplished before it goes to council for final approval.
Okay. So we have two issues that we're talking about and that, one is the contiguous annexation or non-contiguous annexation and the right-of-way of the railroad bed. But the other one is the
And just explain that.
About the density and the use of the land.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Fennell.
I had a, a message from Andy Leith. They're having trouble. Comment, can you hear Andy? He's having trouble communicating, trying to get into the conversation.
Mr. Chairman, this is James Fenton. When I have a chance to comment, I would like to.
John, I also got a, also got a text from Andy Leith that he would rather take a, a deferral.
Okay.
Okay. Let me hear from James Fenton and then we'll address that. Mr. Fenton, go ahead.
We have done considerable research regarding the abandoned CSX railway and guidelines indicate that most of these easements were created back in eighteen ninety-eight and nineteen oh two and that the property reverts to the original property owners. And so we have been trying to track down who originally owned those. As Mr. McCord said, we now own the property, the city now owns the property to the north there. And obviously, this particular project owns a, a, a good chunk of that property also. But it, it is a, a fairly intricate dance that will get us to the ability to, to annex either one of those pieces of property. In addition, there are only two of those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight townhomes on the north side of that property, on the north side of that triangle, that really caused concern for the Economic Development Agency. And I would enjoin Andy Leith, Lid Designs, in maybe a slight redesign of that northern portion where they could just remove those two buildings and realign some of that stuff and make it acceptable to everyone. So I appreciate the fact that he's willing to defer this. I think it's an easy solution. It's just going to take a little bit more conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fenton. Do, is a representative from our city attorney's office on the, in the meeting?
Yes, John, I'm here. Latice Alexander.
Ms. Alexander, can I, we're having trouble getting, the applicant's representative is having trouble communicating. Can I consider the message that he relayed through Councilman Fennell to be a request for deferral on the part of the applicant?
We really don't have any other choice at this time unless he tries.
Mr. Perrier, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, sorry, the batteries died in the keyboard and I was pressing the spacebar to unmute and it would not. So I apologize for that.
Glad to have you back.
Hey, and what Councilman Fennell said about requesting a deferral, that is accurate and I would like to request one.
Very well. So we have a, I will make a motion to approve the applicant's request for deferral. Do I hear?
Second your motion.
Second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. All in favor of approval of the motion to accept the applicant's request for a deferral on items eight and nine, please indicate by saying hi to the roll call vote. Mary Ann, please take the roll call vote.
Do you want to vote on eight and then nine or together?
You're right, I need to vote on them separately. And if I understand the applicant, the applicant was requesting deferral on both items. So on item eight first and then please take a roll call vote on item nine.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Seven zero. And on item nine, Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We will now proceed to item number ten on the agenda, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh eight four. McCain Station Phase One Commercial, Final Master Development Plan. Which staff member is handling this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh King. This is an infrastructure FMDP for the commercial phases of McCain Station. For the McCain Station PMDP, a mixed-use development. So this is the portion furthest to Big Station Camp Road. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight four. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Old batteries.
Hang here.
I believe Mr. Perrier's screen has frozen. I'm hoping he did not lose internet connection again. I'm also going to mute Zach and Andy's conversation. Wes, I've unmuted you while we're waiting for our chairman to join us again.
Okay, we'll wait.
We have lost Mr. Perrier from the meeting. Mr. Chairman or Mr. Vice Chair Matt Harris, are you able to step in in John's temporary absence?
Yes, I will be glad to try and fill his shoes.
Okay. So this is item ten, McCain Station Phase One Commercial FMDP. It's an FMDP for the commercial sections of McCain Station, the front, oh, one-third or so of the property along Big Station Camp Road. Along Big Station Camp. Staff recommends approval of this item. Happy to answer any questions.
I got one.
Yes, Mr. Fennell.
How many items are we showing for this particular development here tonight?
Item ten and item eleven are both McCain Station.
Okay. Nick, is Nick Tuttle on this call?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Did you have a discussion with Mr. Hopland on this today concerning the curb and the gutters as far as the width of it?
I spoke with Wes McGill, who is the representative for the applicant, and I believe he is attending the meeting tonight. And we made a comment about a wider gutter pan, which is preferable for just ease of maintenance and, and, and things of that nature. And the comment really, we don't have a requirement in our subregs or, or any other construction manuals that the city of Gallatin has adopted that would require a wider gutter pan, but it's, it's a preference. So it, it could be, my screen just knocked off. I don't know if you guys can still hear me or not.
I can.
Okay.
Did you get this, did you get this worked out with them though?
I think we lost Mr. Tuttle.
Can you hear me now?
You're back.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Nick. I'm sorry.
So, no, my internet connection's been unstable. So I'm actually joined in by the phone and through the internet, which I may want to just drop off the internet and just let the phone do the work. What I was saying is, you, you could, you could remove the condition. We, we don't have anything within our regs that requires it. So really, we had indicated this is more of a preference and so that doesn't necessarily have to be a condition.
Okay. But do we, do we have a representative for the applicant to speak?
Yes, Wes McGill with Reagan Smith is here.
All right, Wes. Yeah, do you have any, do you have any comments or feedback to, to, to the project or specifically to the request for the gutter?
Yeah, we, me and Nick and I spoke earlier today and I told him that we would like to proceed on with the twenty-four inch curbing gutter section that's currently proposed. And that's to be consistent with the approved PMDP and then Gallatin on the move twenty twenty. And he, he indicated. Galton on the move twenty twenty. And he indicated it was their, their preference to have the thirty inch.
Okay, gotcha.
So hey, Matt, so Wes was cutting out on me a little bit. He's saying that they come to a resolution between Nick and Wes.
No, I think what I, what I understood was they, the applicant would like to proceed with the the curb and gutter as they submitted in the past and not do the wider one. And Nick, my question is, does that, does that, I know it's, you know, a preference. So it's what would be the rationale? Why would engineering need or ask for a wider gutter on that application?
Sure. You may have paid attention to this, but an eighteen inch gutter pan, it's typically going to have an inlet structure that's wider than the gutter pan. So you'd end up having six inches of that inlet structure, the metal frame and grate that's sitting out into the asphalt as opposed to all being contained within the concrete curb section. So it's a, it's a, it's a cleaner look, but it's also a maintenance thing because not only for the City of Galton and going in and doing milling work where we'd have to work around those curb inlets, but for a citizen that's driving through there, you could have a a little metal point that's sticking up and cause a bump for them to drive over and and it could even be something that could be a liability for the city if it were to get in bad enough shape.
Okay, now that makes sense, but also just to make sure I understood right. It's not part of our current regulations though, correct? So it's not, it's not something they're required to do. It's really just at this point a request from engineering?
That's correct. We, we throw it out there and hope that the applicant will be agreeable to it. It looks like my staff actually had listed it as a requirement. Hopefully I haven't dropped off here again. My screen has dropped.
We can still hear you.
Okay, so, so yeah, that's.
Nick, the only thing that's brought to my attention was if the other developments in the area, if we're in line with with the Omen, they had to do the same requirements.
So Councilman, we, it's, we take the similar approach and try to, we make the suggestion each time it comes up. This is something that we've got on our list that we would like to to update our regulations so that when we're using the curbing gutter section that's on the outside of a roadway, not a median, but on the outside of the roadway, we would like for it to be at least twenty-four inches in width. But currently, it's not a requirement. So we're asking.
Okay, all right, Nick, thank you.
Absolutely. Does anyone, does anyone else have any other questions about this project? I see Mr. Perrier, it looks like he's joined us again. John, are you back? Okay. We were, we were just.
Every, every time, well, this is twice now that it redirects me to a previous, a planned Galton Zoom meeting that we held several weeks ago, and then it kills the internet connection. So apologize for that, but I was off in a planned Galton meeting.
Well, we're glad, we're glad you're back.
But you keep going with whatever item you're on because I'm, I didn't hear any of it.
No, it's fair and fair enough.
Commissioners, I want to, I want to clarify one thing. Keeping in mind that the map that you see or the plan that you see on your screen shows the FMDP, which includes roads and drainage improvements only. And there are conditions attached to that. I want to clarify also that the road B, which will be the private road where they're asking for the design exception that engineering had discussed, but also requires them to negotiate with the adjacent property owner to provide that street connection to Springdale Lane. There is a private strip of land between their north boundary and Springdale Lane that they will have to negotiate with the adjacent property owner in order to develop this plan and provide that connection.
Yeah, and we will be able to provide an easement across that property to Springdale Lane.
Okay. So you, you've already, so you guys already got that worked out with the adjacent property owner?
Yeah, the developer now controls that property.
That makes it much, much simpler then. So, okay. Does anyone else in the commission have any questions for the applicant or for staff? I don't.
Chairman, if you don't mind me jumping in one more time.
By all means.
This is, this is Nick. I'm looking at the conditions and I know I've looked through all this before and maybe someone can fill me in, but I'm not seeing that we have a condition of approval for the traffic impact study to be required here for this approval. I mean, if it's not a condition, if somebody can correct me, we need to add that as a condition. If you would like to remove the gutter pan requirement, that's condition number twelve. If we want to replace that condition with the requirement that the traffic impact study be approved for this plan to be considered approved.
Okay. Is, is that something that we've, we've asked them to do already? Or I guess I, you have to forgive me, I missed the work question on, on this item.
No worries. Matter, matter of fact, we actually had deferred this item from the last month's agenda because of the traffic impact study. And they have submitted it and we've been through a review and response and we actually have it back from them. So we're, they're working on resubmitting it to us now, but the things, the comments that we had the second go around were very minor in nature. So we felt comfortable in going ahead and bringing this to you for approval.
Okay, so, so I'll ask the applicant then, is that, are you guys confident you'll be able to work out the traffic study and and resolve that with the engineering department?
Yes, sir. We agree with that.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. But if anybody else has any questions, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve item number ten, removing condition twelve with the curb and gutter, but adding a condition that the approval is contingent upon the completed traffic study with the engineering department.
Mr. Vice Chair, I can add some clarification. The language for the condition that Nick would like to add will read as follows. This development is subject to the findings and recommendations of the Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District established by ordinance number oh one nine oh nine dash four six, as it falls within that TID. Pro rated contributions for traffic infrastructure improvements as recommended in the study or subsequent traffic studies submitted for development review and approval shall be required based on the impact of select needed infrastructure improvements. Prior to recording of the final plat, the developer shall enter into a prorated agreement with the city.
Okay.
Josh, I'm not sure that that particular condition is requiring the traffic impact study to be approved for this plan. I know that it's, it's mentioning the traffic impact study and it's requiring the developer to enter into an agreement based on the ordinance for Big Station Camp Boulevard Transportation Improvement District. And so I think that's I'd feel more comfortable with one more condition.
Okay, Nick, go ahead.
As you're saying, I felt more comfortable with the additional condition that's specific to the traffic impact study. Just as Vice Chair Harris has, has made a motion for.
Okay. Yeah, I Josh, I appreciate the clarity. I think, I think I understand what's, what's being asked by, by engineering. So it's this for what we need to do tonight, the, the, just the condition that'd be added to the, to the, to the approval for this project, the stage of the traffic study to be completed and accepted by engineering is all we need for tonight. Is that, is that what you're saying, Nick?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So you're, Matt, your, your motion still stands stated.
And I'll restate the motion. The motion's for a motion to approve removing condition number twelve for the the thirty inch curbing gutter and adding a condition for this approval that the traffic study be completed and accepted as a contingent, contingency for approval.
I'll second your motion, Matt.
Okay, so we got a first and a second. And if I can get a roll call vote, that would be appreciated.
Open for discussion.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, open for discussion. Anybody have any discussion on the item, the motion?
Yes, this is James Fenton with the Economic Development Agency. As long as that traffic study is moved forward in a timely fashion, it was presented April ninth and it still is, is out there being considered. We just make sure that we don't impede the progress out there. If we could, just make sure that traffic study gets put together and comments come back in a timely fashion. I would appreciate it.
All right, well, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you, James. Any, any, any comments or discussion from the commission members? All right, hearing, hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Chair Perrier.
I should recuse myself on the vote because I missed part of the discussion.
Okay. Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Houses six, one or six zero, recuse.
All right, the motion carries. And with that, I will turn the meeting back over to Chair Perrier.
Just bring me up to see, did, were y'all voting on item ten or eleven?
Ten, just item ten.
All right, well then we'll, item number eleven is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh eight three McCain Station preliminary plat. And who's handling that item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh King again. This is a three lot subdivision within McCain Station PMDP for the front third, two thirds of the project that is the commercial entitlements of the overall mixed use McCain Station development. There was an error that was made by yours truly putting the agenda packet together. So I'm going to take over sharing the screen from Julian for just a second to show this is the revised resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight three. Condition of approval number one says provide deeds and or owner affidavits authorizing the preliminary plat. And item two says lot three shall be excluded from the preliminary plat unless the city engineer or planning commission authorize approval since this portion of the preliminary plat is not included in a FMDP. I noticed this error probably about thirty-five or forty minutes ago. So I was able to send this over to Wes McGill with Reagan Smith and talk, talk to him about it very briefly. But what this is indicating is that we need the owner affidavits or deeds showing that the individual owners of these separate lots are in agreement with what the developer and the developer's design team have developed and have come up with. And lot three, if Julian, you can go back to sharing for a moment. I need your screen again. Lot three is the residential entitled portion of the development. So if you could go back right here. So this is the residential development, the residential portion of the development. On the preliminary plat, it's being shown as lot three. There is not a FMDP that has been approved for the residential portion. It is under the PMDP entitlements. So what condition number two is saying that planning commission or the city engineer has to authorize approval since the portion of the preliminary plat is shown as lot three is not part of the FMDP that was just approved as item ten. So with the exception of that, the preliminary plat is consistent with McCain Station PMDP and staff recommends approval with the modified conditions one and two as presented to the applicant and will be modified in the, added to the official record.
Okay, I have to step in and ask a question, Mary Ann. There is no way I'm going to be able to restate what Josh just said when we're defining this motion. So did you get everything he wrote down?
That was a little long-winded. I'm not sure if I got everything, but I can get it from him, exact statement and put it in the minutes.
I'll just say when we make a motion, it will be with modified conditions one and two as will be provided to you by staff.
Yes, that's, sounds great.
Good, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, the length, the staff report goes into more detail on lot three, the residential entitlement, a portion of the preliminary plat. It goes into a little bit more detail than I did. So we'll have, there is language in front of you that supports what has just been said. And we will work with Mary Ann to make sure that the minutes are accurate reflection of what's been discussed tonight.
Can I ask Josh a question, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Josh, they, they do own that property and they are also the developers, correct?
There's portions of the property that are not owned by the develop, the master developer at this time. So the, the owner as of six twenty-two, twenty twenty is Ray and Gene Bowles, according to the county. I know Randy has been involved with the development of this process. We don't, from county records accurately show that the property has changed hands. So that is why the modified condition one says provide deeds and or owner affidavits authorizing the preliminary plat.
Do we have a representative for the applicant online?
Yeah, this is Wes McGill. I might ask that, Josh, I don't know if Randy Hoffman's on. If you might be able to unmute him as well. I think he's going to have to speak to some of this.
Randy, have I unmuted you?
Sir, I think you, I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Very good. Josh, I'm not sure. I will be happy to provide ownership and deed of record. We closed on the property back in April. So all of the property that you are showing on this current screen, we own. The little triangle piece up in the upper left corner was a portion of about six acres that we purchased from the Franklin's. Down in the lower corner of that little triangle piece, purchased from the, if you remember, we had to annex that little piece for Mr. Wake Cazer. But everything within the dashed lines of the exterior, I'll go on record as saying we own. Now, I will say lots one and two are in a separate LLC than the residential piece, lot three. However, it is the same ownership. And I'll be happy to provide record of.
Thank you, Randy.
So do we have questions from any member of the commission for the applicant's representative or for staff?
I have questions for staff. Looking over this, and Josh, you may have already mentioned it, this looks very consistent with the preliminary master development plan that we already approved. Are there any significant changes that I'm, that I'm missing?
There were no significant changes between the preliminary plat and what the PMDP shows. This is truly dividing the commercial entitlements off from the residential, residential entitlements to the rear of the property.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, I want to clarify also that this preliminary plat includes portions that were not included in the FMDP that you just approved, namely the lot three. And it also does not include the northern portion that could, I discussed where it connects to Springdale Drive. So this preliminary plat doesn't include that portion of the FMDP that would include the property with the private street connecting Springdale Drive. That will have to come as a separate FMDP. That will have to come as a separate FMVP a little bit later on and a separate preliminary plat.
Understood. Any other, uh, questions from, uh, members of the commission?
So what, what I want y'all to do with that condition number two, clearly, if, if engineering is okay with proceeding to include lot three with this preliminary plat, even though it was not with the FMVP. Uh, I want y'all to acknowledge that from engineering, and if you're wanting to approve lot three as part of this preliminary plat, you need to clearly state so.
If I can ask a question of engineering, Nick, if you're still on with us, does engineering have any concerns with this?
Uh, I'm still here and I don't have any issues.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I'm, I'm here. I'm reading over the, um, I'm scrolling down to the, plan so I can zoom in and see lot three. Bill, you're saying that you want us to include a condition that attaches lot three to this approval? I'm scrolling back and forth through images.
Yeah, normal, normally, we will not recommend any approval of a preliminary plat and or final plat on a master plan community unless it has an FMVP approved. In this case, that portion of the, this preliminary plat which shows lot three is not part of an approved FMVP. However, if you're acknowledging that you understand that and engineering doesn't object, then I'm not gonna get in the way of that. That's y'all's decision, you're, but keep in mind that there might be other requests later on where people are doing the same thing when plats or preliminary plats approved when there's not an FMVP approved. I'm not sure why they didn't include lot three as part of the FMVP, but, um.
That might be a question for the, for the applicant, um, Wes or Randy, or one of you guys wanna, wanna comment on that?
Yeah, um, lot three, uh, is just kind of the remainder left over for the residential portion. There are no proposed improvements with the FMVP on lot three at this time. Um, it's, uh, simply creating that lot line divide. And getting it on, on record essentially. And then we would, we do plan to come in the near future with a preliminary plat for the improvements on lot three.
Well, an FMVP will be needed on it.
Has it, yeah, an FMVP and preliminary plat, yes.
Okay. That answers my question.
This is Nick, really quick, uh, in that the applicant, they, they really didn't have to show the lot. They could have just showed it as a remainder and, um, so they're, they're not really showing, doing anything on it. That's why we don't have any concerns. There's, there's nothing, nothing happening with it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see any problem with this. That's just me speaking, um, but I, I, I understand at this point.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it, and I don't think it sets a precedent, a bad precedent. So, um, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve with the, um, the corrections that staff provided, uh, will provide in writing to Mary Ann, uh, to items one and two, conditions one and two.
I'll second your motion, John.
Seconding by, uh, Mr. Harris, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. So Mary Ann, if you please take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Houses seven zero.
Thank you. Motion approved. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is, uh, resolution number two zero two zero dash oh nine six, Gallatin Industrial Data Center, Woolhawk.
Uh, Julian Ogden, staff planner.
Go ahead, Julian.
The applicant, the applicant and owner are requesting approval of the site plan for the Gallatin Industrial Data Center for a nine hundred eighty two thousand five hundred square foot data center with associated infrastructure. On a hun, eight hundred and five point eight one acres, obviously a much smaller portion of that is actually being developed. Um, located at one four three two Gateway Drive. The property is done IR industrial restrictive. The annexation and rezoning of the property is not already within city limits was approved by city council on June sixteenth. The site plan also includes a gatehouse, a substation, and a construction office. The development will be enclosed by security fencing made of prefabricated modular panels for security. The site plan shows parking provided around the primary structure. So up here we have the, the grading plan. And then you can see internally, uh, the parking areas. As parking requirements for a data center are not clearly addressed in the Gallatin zoning ordinance, the developer has provided the number of parking spaces that reflect building occupation and usage based on their building model. The applicant proposes two hundred and twenty spaces, which includes seven handicap spaces as required. This is consistent with the practice used to determine parking for uses not specifically described in the code. The planning commission shall determine if this is an acceptable parking plan. See some of the infrastructure in the substation there and some closeups of the parking. The landscaping plan was provided. The plan shall be amended to show a type fifty buffer yard along the northern property boundary directly adjacent to the primary building. It was just unclear on the plan how that was gonna be met, whether it's through existing vegetation or new vegetation. Um, either would be, would suffice. In this case, there are a number of tree lines, uh, that will be maintained on this property even with construction. Uh, we just want that clarified on the plans, um, and that was a condition of approval. It's there. And then some of the fencing details, which are pretty typical as you see in the industrial area. And then the primary building facade consists of concrete panels and metal panels with curtain glass walls along the main office facade with a maximum height of fifty four feet. Staff believe this proposed architecture is equal or superior to that required by code and is compatible with adjacent industrial uses. Staff recommends that an exception to the brick or stone requirement be approved. They did provide a couple renderings. Planning Department recommends approval of the resolution. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have a representative for the applicant or is our Gallatin Economic Development Agency representing that?
Mr. Brad Simpson from the, uh, from Barge should be online, I believe, as a representative.
That's correct. I'm here.
Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, to the best of my abilities. Uh, thus far, any comments that have been provided by the planning staff, uh, we don't have any concerns about, we'll happily address those.
James, can I ask you a, a question about Project Woolhawk?
Yes, sir.
Um, very happy that this thing is landing here in Gallatin. I support it whole way. Um, my question is, back in the day, uh, I remember we, uh, voted to, uh, do a temporary concrete facility in the industrial area. Is that facility, is that there to facilitate, uh, just for this purpose right here?
Um, that facility was approved, uh, to give them the ability to participate in the construction of, of future buildings in the industrial center. Yes. And, uh, they will have the ability, I believe, to go ahead and bid on being able to participate in the construction.
I got you. I just, I really hope we can use our local, uh, suppliers for this project. That's my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions from, uh, members of the commission?
I, I don't have any other questions. I think this is gonna be a great project and, uh, from what I've seen so far, it's been very well put together.
I'll echo that. It's exciting and it's a, a huge step up for Gallatin. Uh, we're excited to have this project land here. I'll entertain, um, I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry, I don't know if there are conditions. Let me go back and read. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a second by Albert Stroudler? Was it?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for the roll call vote. Mary Ann, please take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe. Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibbler.
Hi.
I'm not sure if you heard Dr. Organe. I did not.
I did not hear him.
Okay, that would leave six zero. It passes.
Motion, uh, approved. We'll move on to item, um, number thirteen, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh nine eight, Pinnacle Bank, uh, Final Master Development Plan. And this item does include a public comment. What staff, which staff members handling this item?
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. This is Josh King again. Uh, this is a single commercial building on a three point seven seven acre lot located at fifteen thirty four Noah Lane. This would be across the street from, uh, I believe it's a Walgreens. The FM, the parcel was originally permitted under the Greensboro Village PUD Plan Unit Development. More years ago than I would like to admit. It is being developed by Baker South Gallatin. The Greensboro, Greensboro Village PUD Master Development Plan, uh, has always included this parcel, uh, as future development, but has never indicated a specific use for this parcel. As part of the FMVP, the PUD will be revised to reflect what's being shown on the screen as presented by the applicant. The FMVP is consistent with the original Greensboro PUD Master Development Plan, uh, which envisioned commercial development at this intersection. The property is currently cleared and climbs from elevation of four hundred ninety one feet to a high of five hundred feet. Uh, the applicant provided, uh, approval from the LA Green Architectural Board, which is required for all developments within the Greensboro PUD. Uh, an updated master plan will be forthcoming. Staff recommends approval with conditions of this item.
Okay, do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Yes, sir. This is Chip Hoerth, um, with SNH Group, and I believe Neil Parrish with Hastings is here too.
Uh, please go ahead. Do you have any comments?
Um, Josh, is Neil available?
Neil has been unmuted. Yes, Neil, you've been unmuted.
Wonderful. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so, um, I believe, thanks for having us back again. The, uh, we were able to address, I think, uh, the comments that you gave us last time. Um, we heard your concerns, uh, about a few items with respect to connectivity. And the previous papers that we discussed, and, uh, I believe that we had that these plans appear to be the older plans that are on the screen. I'm happy to speak over them, but, uh, to describe the what changes we've made in the interim.
Uh, Neil, keep going. I'll, uh, try and pull up the mo, the correct versions.
Yes, sir. As I, as I recall, the main, a few of the main questions had to deal with, uh, the dumpster enclosures orientation to the street. Um, and its ability to be picked from the drive aisle from the back. So in response to that, we, uh, turned it so that it's ninety degrees with that entry for a side pick of a small, uh, series of small trash containers. So hopefully that addresses the concern there. On the other side of the property, uh, along Greenly, the question was asked about connectivity to, from the sidewalk into the parcel itself. We studied that on the front of the building, um, and ultimately provided, we're proposing to provide connectivity, um, down to the west. Where the shared drive aisle comes in just above where your hand is. Now to the north, yeah, yes, sir. So just, just south of there where that hand is, uh, we were proposing that we provide an additional piece of sidewalk up to our property from there to be connected, um, down to the existing sidewalk at a future date when that parcel is developed. The combination of two factors on the north end of our lot, uh, made it difficult to get, frankly, just get down over the elevation, um, with the remaining space with those two bower retention ponds that are there. It's, we, we sit above the road in that location several feet. And, um, so in order to make accessible, uh, connectivity, we were hoping that we could provide that small access point, as I said, close to the shared access drive. And then that way, when, when that parcel is developed and it is connected, we would be in a position to have full pedestrian connection. In addition to the pedestrian connection we're providing on the internal road, um, backed by Chloe, uh, and Noah on the southeast side. So it would be a second point of connectivity just out to Greenly. And then here too, you can see that the papers we mentioned, the stormwater, uh, questions were, uh, that, there were several that were asked the last meeting, and I believe we've, uh, responded to those as well.
Right, Chair, I have a question for the applicant, and please forgive me, I was absent for the work session meeting, so I did not get that, to talk about this item then. Can we talk a little about what is, what are we doing on the, this would be the bottom of the plan, which I think is, uh, southwest, and where the homes that are in Fairview Plas, and here the plantation that are on Potter Lane. So the, the rear, the, around the bottom of the plan is the rear yards of residential homes or is there anything being done with landscaping, buffering, fence, similar to what Goodall did, kind of as it goes to where their townhomes are, um, on the rear of this property?
Mr. Harris, that, that portion of the property, um, beyond the shared access drive, it will be on the two future parcels.
Okay.
To the southeast and to the southwest of us. You can see the property line, uh, is splitting the shared access drive on both Greenly and on Noah. And so our parcel is, is significantly above that zone, but we are conforming to all, um, landscaping, buffering, uh, with the PUD around our parking lines, uh, parking lots, excuse me, and the shared access drives.
Okay, yep, I, I found that. I found that page. So, all right, thanks. That answers my question.
No problem.
Uh, with that, I'll, I will open a public comment on this item. Is there, Josh, do we have anybody in the public who is raising their hand to speak in regards to this item? Number thirteen.
We have, uh, Jeannie Estep. Jeannie, your line's been unmuted.
Hi, um, I actually, I had left a comment back on eight and nine, which were the Bledsoe Springs. So I, I know it was deferred, but I had concerns about that. This one here, I don't have any.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that is everyone who has raised their hand to speak for this agenda item. We've received no email comments on it.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment and open it to questions from many members of the commission for the applicant or for staff.
John, I've got a, I've got a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Fennell.
Hey, uh, Matt, uh, guys, we're saw living there neighborhood along with Pat. Matt, I kind of can't really understand how this lays in here that well. But the questions you asked was getting up next to the residential houses. In your opinion, do we have enough buffering right there?
You know, Sean, I think that this applicant's property, you know, the way it comes together, there's still, the next two parcels that are still yet to be developed would be the ones that really join the residential homes. So I think that's what the applicant was, in his response to my question. I think, you know, talking about screen and buffering, that really is where we would have, I think we would address that.
Okay, I was making sure I heard it right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Johnny Wilson, I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Mrs. Hibbler. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you please call a roll call vote?
Chair Prier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
This is seven zero.
Okay, motion approved. Item approved. We'll move on to item number fourteen, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash one hundred. Twice daily at Newman's Crossing, an amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan. And this one also will come with a public comment. Which staff members handling this item?
Mr. Chairman, this is Josh King. The item fourteen is a twice daily convenience store with fueling stations at Newman's Crossing at the southwest corner of Long Hollow Pike and Big Station Camp Boulevard. The original PMDP for Newman's Crossing has included either a drive through drive through restaurant or a convenience center with fueling at this intersection as part of the original PMDP. The FMVP that was submitted for the twice daily brand of convenience sales and gasoline was, is proposed as part of this FMVP at this location. It is consistent with the PMDP as originally proposed. The applicant has submitted both the PMDP and the PMDP amendment slash FMVP, and it is consistent with the PMDP and the zoning ordinance at this time. Staff recommends approval with conditions of this item.
Thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Bradley, there you are. Mr. Bradley Bork with GMC.
Yes, this is Brad Bork. We have loved working with the staff on this, and there was a couple things that have came up in the work session about connections to the public road as well as about the road driveway for the other development connected to this lot. We've added, we've addressed both of those items per the work session on our recent middle. The driveway is in the conditions of this, of this currently. And for the connection to the road, we've added actually two. One is on the south east corner, and the other one is on the northwest corner connections there. One goes to the other development. The other one connects to Big Station Camp Boulevard's sidewalk once that is constructed.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'll open it to a public comment. Josh, do we have anybody in the public who's raising their hand and wishes to speak on this item?
We have received no email comments about this item, and no one from the audience has raised their hand and wishes to speak on this item.
With that, I will close the public comment and open it to questions from members of the commission for the applicant or for staff.
Chairman, this is Nick, the engineer.
Yes.
I have one, one quick comment. Just, just of, as of last week, a pro rata share contribution agreement has been executed by the Newman's Crossing developer, and so there's no longer a need to have the fifth condition if you'd like to strike that condition from this particular approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill McCord, city planner. Want to mention that I did receive a telephone call about a week and a half ago from a resident in the Carrollton subdivision who expressed concern. I won't say opposition, but concern of this use being provided at this corner of this intersection.
But, um, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll I'll make a motion to approve with all of, through the item with all of status recommendations with the exception of number five, which we will strike.
I'll second your motion, John.
Seconded by Matt Harris. Any discussion?
I have one comment. You know, I don't think this is particularly the time, but I'm concerned about the lighting because we have a really large subdivision residential area all around it. And, and again, I've, I've got concerns about our lighting whole lighting concept and I just think we need to be really careful about keeping all of that on that site and not spraying, spreading it throughout the residential areas. Again, I don't think this is the right particular time, but I want to get it on the record that there's concern about that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, this is Josh King again. The applicant has submitted a lighting design plan which meets current City of Gallatin regulations for, uh, essentially bleed over of lighting onto adjacent properties beyond the property line. So we in the future, we can look at updating the, updating the regulations, but the applicant has submitted a set of plans for lighting which comply with current City of Gallatin standards.
Do you have an opinion about how our standards relate to other forward thinking communities?
Dr. Organe, I'm not allowed to have an opinion. I'm allowed to tell you what the, at, at this meeting, what the lighting standards are for the current City of Gallatin, and we are, uh, welcome to evaluate those at a future time and how they compare with other communities across the United States.
Not a problem. Dr. Organe, Sean Fennell. Uh, several people on the Honda dealership complained, and I have a few still complaining every now and then about the lighting, and I've been there at night, and I know that they have made some adjustments. And I haven't heard anything in a while, but you know, I stand with you in what you're saying right there about the lighting next to these houses right there. That is a concern of mine, and I also like to be on the record about that. I made, I made those same comments before anything happened at the Honda dealership trying to protect the people in Savannah. And Mr. McCord, you may be able to have an opinion. Again, this may not be the right forum right now, but I think we really need to look at what forward thinking communities are doing to, to protect adjacent properties.
Okay, I noted, and then we can look into that as well and see what other communities are doing as far as the illumination standards.
Mr. McCord.
Mrs. Hibbler, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I was saying, the, the message you said you received by email from a resident.
Uh, it was a telephone call.
Oh, sorry, telephone call that you received. Did it, was it any more specific detail as to their concern at this location of this area for this use?
Uh, just the general tone of disapproval of having that use on this corner.
Okay. Thank you.
May I speak about the lighting on this? This is Brad Bork.
Yes, please, go ahead.
If, again, you can look back, we do provide a photometric plan that shows the lighting on this project. We also have, there's another gas station not too far away. You can look at how that one's lit as well. I've been very impressed by how it's lit for protection during, while fueling. Is, it's got a very good lit to the actual pumps. And if you look, it, it does die out pretty quickly. One foot candle is a pretty good rough lighting is when it's starting to be, you can actually read or see something, but once you get past that, again, not a lighting expert, but that's just kind of an opinion in, in mind. I can't really give lighting expert opinion here. But if you've noticed, it starts dying out even a lot more to point one, to point two, even some zeros close to the road of Big Station Camp and Long Hollow Pike. So without actually seeing it installed, you know, there's a pretty good damper shown on that plan as you get through, throughout. I will suggest when you start looking at dimming lights is the protection of streets and people move, uh, driving and people walking around. If you make it too dim, this is my opinion, not an engineering opinion, it starts getting a little, um, little unsafe in that case. So you got to look at both sides of that.
Hey, good. Yeah, and this is, this is Mr. Harris. I had a couple of comments on that. I'm, I'm very familiar with this particular location and you know, not, not saying that having a conversation about lighting requirements and the bleed over is a general, you know, theme, isn't something worth talking about. I- in this location, that corner of Long Hollow Pike and Big Station Camp is a very dark intersection. I actually have a, have a property around that area, so I'm through there in the evenings quite frequently. So actually having, you know, a good business with some lighting on that corner, I think is going to actually tend to improve safety in that location, not, not take away from it. So well, I think it's a conversation we might want to have elsewhere. In this particular location, I think it's actually an improvement for the city.
Well, if there's no other discussion, we have a motion already on the floor and with a second, and that motion is to approve with the six conditions in staff's report with the exception of number five, which has been stricken from the conditions. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor of that approval of that indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, if you'll call a roll call vote.
Chair Prier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh.
Okay. It passes seven zero.
Okay. Motion approved, item approved. Our last item on the agenda is item number fifteen, which is I don't see an item number. It's Foxland Phase Ten Sidewalk Revision Request. Mary Tosh Holmes.
Yes, this is, uh, Gillian Ogden, staff planner. Um, this is the item that we've discussed the last couple meetings. So I can just give you a brief update as to where we are. Um, the applicant is requesting to remove a private sidewalk from the approved master development plan for Foxland Phase Ten. It is shown on your screen, um, right now, highlighted to show the portion that, um, they would like to remove, uh, predominantly because there's an existing tree line that they would like to maintain along Douglas Bend Road. And I've included the pictures that they've shown and, and we have discussed. I've also included in your packet some information from when the PMDP was approved in two thousand and five for you to make your decision. There was a condition on the two thousand and five PMDP that states that planning commissioner moved the sidewalk requirement on Douglas Bend Road from Foxland Drive to Foxland Boulevard. This was included in conversation about sidewalks along the golf course in particular, from what I could tell from back then. I can't say I know where Foxland Drive is, but I wanted to present the condition to you so that you could, um, be aware of that. I've also included a copy of the approved PMDP for Foxland from two thousand and five, which does not show sidewalks along Douglas Bend in that area. It also shows a very early phase of Foxland Phase Ten before it had any final approval, and it does not, most of its sidewalks were internal to that development versus how it's laid out now. So that is the further research that we were able to complete and, and should, should help you in making your determination. But, but that is where we are in the applicant. Joshua Gibbs is here to further discuss.
Very well. If we have a representative for the applicant, please speak up.
Joshua Gibbs, oh, there we go.
Yeah, it's the phone number.
Joshua, are you there?
Yes, sir, this is, yes, sir, I am. This is Joshua Gibbs with Mary Tosh Holmes. I am just, uh, here to listen to see what the conclusion and answer any questions that anyone may have on this. I know we've been trying to get, um, to kind of a stopping point on, on what the requirement is, but, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to.
Any questions from members of the commission? We've discussed this at length. Well, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
Could you, you're approving a resolution to, you, you want to approve, what are you approving here then exactly?
Well, I'm trying to scroll through and find it. The resident, you are suggesting that we remove the sidewalk. So I think the motion is to approve the removal of the sidewalk or the elimination.
Mike, I'll, I'll, I'll clarify my motion. My, my motion is to approve the applicant's request to not install the sidewalk as shown on that plan. It's, it's just not feasible in that location.
And that was my motion, I seconded that. Any discussion?
Is there a way that we could, like, going forward, establish something if sidewalks aren't feasible or this type of situation where we could put it into a, we could address that? I'm not sure how you want to.
Well, Mrs. Hibler, we do have a sidewalk fund. I think that the challenge here is that we have to determine if the location of this sidewalk along their private drive was in lieu of a public right-of-way sidewalk along Douglas Bend, and I think that Jillian's research has proven that this was never, this internal sidewalk was never intended to serve as an alternate sidewalk to go down Douglas Bend Road. It was truly internal one on a private drive, and you can't make an applicant, if they want to eliminate a private drive sidewalk, you can't make them put that into a public fund, a public sidewalk. However, you're right, if this was along Douglas Bend and they couldn't do it because it was not practical, we could have them contribute into a sidewalk fund and do it elsewhere in town if walks are needed.
Right, is that what, is that what the current sidewalk fund states, what you just said?
To, to the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
But it has to be taken from a public right-of-way area to another public right-of-way area. Somebody on staff, if I'm wrong.
And in this case, the difference is this is a private street, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha. And so Mike, you know, I'll speak, well, my, my concerns at the last meeting with this project really, you know, had to do with the ability for the residents to, to have a walkable community, and we've, we've talked about that on other projects even tonight, having the driveways on the homes that are built be long enough so that the cars in the driveway aren't blocking the sidewalk. So I, I think we're working towards addressing this on future projects. This is one that there, there really is no resolution to, so I just, I think we need to help them put it to rest.
Very good, we have a motion on the floor with a second to approve the applicant's request to delete the sidewalk from the plan and not install it. Any further, seeing no further discussion, or is there further discussion? I'm sorry. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving that request indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, if you'll call a roll call vote, please.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler. Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
The pass is seven zero.
Okay. Sidewalk is gone.
Thank you.
And under other business, I believe staff has a couple of items to discuss under other business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, briefly, I wanted to inform the board that we are moving forward to, to the city council on a request by an applicant to amend our urban growth boundary. This is not something that necessarily requires the planning commission approval. It is only involving one property owner and adjacent right-of-way, and the property owner requested to be removed from the Hendersonville Urban Growth Boundary included into the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundary. It includes that portion of the Westfield project that was not included with the annexation of that property in the master development plan. So assuming this urban growth boundary is approved and the ten to eleven acre parcel then is moved into the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundary, then we can take action to annex the property and amend the master development plan for Westfield to include this property. It is on the east side of Big Station Camp Boulevard between the CSX over, the overpass over the CSX railroad and Highway thirty-one on the east, again, east side of State, Big Station Camp Boulevard. The urban growth boundary adjustment would also move that section of Big Station Camp Boulevard out of the Hendersonville Urban Growth Boundary and into the City of Gallatin Urban Growth Boundary. Hendersonville de-annexed that property back in December, and so since it only involves the one property owner and the property owner consents to it, and the city of Hendersonville is also working to relinquish that portion of their urban growth boundary, it is essentially a minor amendment or administrative action of the cities to amend this urban growth boundary, so it doesn't have to go through a more elaborate review process. So that's moving forward, and we think that's going to go to the city council in early July. The other thing that we have is the Plan Gallatin meetings. We've had several meetings here in the last couple of weeks with citizens. They are like little workshops, and we do these, conduct these by Zoom where we provide the results, or GNRC staff provides the results of the survey of questions that were offered on June the fourth, and so we reviewed those survey results. And generally, the survey results were that the public that participated generally prefers the compact development growth pattern of the three options that were presented. That would be the sprawling pattern, the as-is pattern, which is the continuation of our current pattern, and/or a more compact development pattern. So that was generally the result of that, and we've had, I think, about four or five of those meetings, follow-up meetings with individuals and small groups, and so we participate, I think we had at least about twenty people, I would say, in all of those that participated. Our next step will be scenarios where we will give photographs, and if you will, of various design options that they might want to consider for that compact pattern or other patterns for that, and they may even present the transect as well when they present the scenario. So look forward to that, and hopefully you'll be able to participate.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Yeah, I was at a Plan Gallatin meeting about an hour ago. I don't know why it's happening on these, it just keeps redirecting to that old meeting. And I'd just like to say that at the last Plan Gallatin meeting, we actually had a hundred and seventeen people online at the hot point, so.
Yeah, it was the June, June fourth meeting, I believe.
Yeah, you're correct. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We had a second before I could get there, so thank you very much. We're, we're adjourned.
Have a good night.
Y'all take care.